Very much. I believe the meeting is ready to begin. We have all commissioners present except for Chair Brassfield, but we should do a roll call anyway. And let's see, who will read the names? Will I read the names or will you, Kim?
I'm happy to do that for you, Chair.
All right.
Chair Brassfield is absent. Vice Chair Sandy Freeman. Commissioner Dawson. Mike, you're muted.
Yeah, here.
Commissioner Fletcher.
Here.
Commissioner Latassa.
Present.
Commissioner Millich.
I'm going to be listening. Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Present.
Thank you. Back to you, Chair.
Okay. All right. So all commissioners are present except for Chair Brassfield and the meeting is officially in order. On the consent agenda, the first item is the minutes. Is there a comment on the minutes before we ask for a motion?
This is Hudson Reed. I am moved to approve as submitted.
Is there a second on that?
This is me. Mike Dawson. I second that, please.
Great. There's been a motion to approve the minutes and a second. If there are no further comments, let's do a roll call for the vote, if you don't mind, Kim.
Happy to do that. Vice Chair Freeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa?
Yes.
Commissioner Millich?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
And there's one abstention. Commissioner Brassfield.
He didn't show up.
Okay, after the motion and second though, so we'll now go ahead and turn the meeting over to Chair Brassfield. Chair Brassfield, we've just finished the minutes and if you could please accept public comment now.
Or not.
So I'll go ahead and introduce public comment. The dial-in number is 1-831-225-0330. And please go ahead and call in now and I'm waiting and I have nobody on the call, but we'll wait just a couple of minutes. Thank you.
Would you repeat the number, please, slowly?
Sure. 831-225-0330.
Thank you.
And I'm on, Kim. Mike Brassfield is here.
Yes, we hear you.
Good. I've been getting a wonder.
Got to acknowledge those things.
So Chair Brassfield, there are no public comments, so you're welcome to go to the next agenda item, which is our first public hearing.
Yeah, let's go. I think we have the consent items through the agenda of the minutes from the May 12th meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Brassfield. We've already finished that. We're on to item three. Consideration of the mitigated negative declaration.
Okay, and then we have a staff report on that?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, it's Mike Dawson. I have to recuse myself on this item because I live too close to it.
Welcome to the club on those kind of things.
Aye, aye. I'll see you on the other side.
So before our planner, Kristi Sabdo introduces the item, I'll just go ahead and read the title so our listeners can follow. This afternoon, we're considering adoption of a mitigated negative declaration for the Iris Canyon sediment removal project, including removal of sediment and recontouring a 1,200 linear foot segment of the Iris Canyon Creek Channel. The applicant is the city of Monterey, Thomas Corman, one of our senior engineers. And the zoning for the site is residential single-family zoning district R120 and its parks and open space general plan designation. And with that introduction, I turn it over to Kristi Sabdo, an associate planner with the city of Monterey for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. I'll share my screen here and start the presentation. Okay, thank you. As Kim said, my name is Kristi Sabdo. I'm an associate planner with the city of Monterey Planning Division. The Iris Canyon Creek sediment removal project is a city of Monterey public works project that's being managed by Thomas Corman with the, he's the city's senior engineer and he's in the meeting with us today. The city has prepared the appropriate environmental document, a mitigated negative declaration pursuant to the requirements of SEQA. Staff is recommending adoption of a mitigated negative declaration for the project. The project site traverses the 32 acre city-owned Iris Canyon Green Belt, specifically within a segment of Iris Canyon located a half mile south of Lake Ellis Zero and the park. It's located west of Monterey Peninsula College, just south of Fremont Street. And it's along Iris Canyon Road just east of it and there are residences to the west. Iris Canyon Creek drains approximately 360 acres of land. The creek channel has been subject to erosion and sedimentation. The creek has been migrating out of the historic channel, causing roadway flooding and pavement damage. The project site is maintained by the city of Monterey as open space. As a result of heavy winter storms in 2017 that flooded Iris Canyon Road, the city began reviewing options to address increasing sedimentation and channel protection. The project area is a 1,200 linear foot segment of Iris Canyon and it includes a one and a half acre area of disturbance. The project would involve recontouring the creek channel to reestablish the historic channel and prevent continued flooding of Iris Canyon Road. Removal of 5,000 cubic yards of sediment material. The sediment will be excavated and removed approximately two to five feet below the ground surface and it will include best management practices and erosion control. So this shows, it's a little hard to see, but the conceptual site plan. You'll see, this is a picture of the project area. It's densely vegetated. The project plans will include construction access and staging areas, grading limits, location of temporary fencing around the work area to protect undisturbed riparian habitat areas, best management practices, erosion control, excuse me, that address protection of water quality and sensitive resources. The environmental review of the project identified potential impacts and proposed mitigation measures, which I'll summarize in the next three slides. So there are two special status species, the Monterey deski-footed wood rat and western pond turtle that have the potential to occur at the project site. Pre-construction surveys will be done prior to project getting underway to locate any nest sites. Avoidance measures will be taken to protect these special status species and if not relocation measures will be implemented to, if avoidance is not feasible. Excuse me. Upon completion of sediment removal, the site will be re-vegetated with a riparian, native riparian species mix. So there will be no permanent loss of riparian vegetation. There's potential impacts to wildlife movement and nursery sites. So there will be pre-construction surveys for nesting birds. Any active nests will be flagged and avoided until the nesting site is no longer active. If any cultural resources are discovered unexpectedly, the standard archaeological procedures will be used. There's a potential for erosion and water quality degradation impacts to occur. So there are a series of mitigation measures to control that. Implementation of erosion control during construction require all in-stream project activities to be performed in isolation from surface water flows. So the water flows will be diverted and those diversion structures will be removed upon project completion. There are hazardous spills prevention mitigation measures such as you cannot store equipment or fuel within 65 feet from the active stream channel. And to prevent equipment leaks, there is going to be regular equipment inspections. And because this project is located near residential area, there will be short-term construction noise impact. So we've included mitigation measures to help reduce that impact such as using high-quality muffler systems and eliminating unnecessary idling of machines. And also the construction will be limited per the code to 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. and then on weekends from 8:00 to 6:00 p.m. on Saturday. The project has been noticed and the mitigated negative declaration has gone out for a 30-day public review period. We have not received any public comments. And staff recommends adoption of a mitigated negative declaration. And I'm available for any questions and also Thomas Corman, the project manager, is on the phone as well.
Any questions of staff?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Stephen Millich, what percentage of the work to be done is deepening existing trenches along the side of the road and how much is new and what is it if it's new?
I'm going to ask Thomas Corman to answer that question.
Okay, yes, I'm happy to. I'm pulling up the plans here. Also on the call, we have Nathaniel, who is the project designer. But it's basically a restoration plan, so I can't, I can't give an exact percentage. And Nathaniel, I know you're on the call here. I'm looking at the plans now to give you an exact square footage. Is that what you're looking? Is that what you're looking for?
Well, I'm just wondering whether it's basically a plan to dig out what has flown into existing trenches? Or whether it's widening or new trenches? Or exactly what are we doing?
Yeah, I think I understand. So let me see. So it's basically restoration. So the way we propose this to the Army Corps of Engineers is basically restoration. So what, I understand you probably don't have the project plans with you. But we're just basically removing sediment that has accumulated over the years on this lower half of Iris Canyon.
That was my question.
Adjacent to the roadway.
Yeah, you've answered my question.
Oh, okay.
Any other questions?
I have a couple.
This is Commissioner Latassa. So it was hard for me to tell, how are these trenches going to be constructed? Are they, is it just dirt embankments along the side with a dirt bottom? Or is there, it wasn't evident on the report that we had.
Okay, yeah, opening up my drawings here. So basically, it's just the slopes are about basically two to one. And then the bottom of the channel, the restoration, it width basically varies, but it's basically eight foot in minimum width. And then from there, it's a two to one slope, which is two horizontal, one vertical until it hits basically original grade or existing grade. And then within that, there's restoration by seeding or planting.
Okay, so there's no concrete or riprap or any of that stuff?
Oh, no, no, absolutely not. No.
That's, that was my question. Thanks.
Yeah, okay.
I have a quick question. I know it's probably in there and I didn't see it, but how much does it cost and who's paying for it?
Let me see. I am, I'm looking if we have an engineer's estimate at this point. Our, I, so originally, this, this funding came from, I think it was an original NCIP project or NIP project. And I think all that money has been expended or moved over. So the remaining portion of it, that, the way we look at this is because it's an, an extension basically from the detention basins there is that we were looking to the Measure S fund to fund it.
Okay.
Roadways?
I'm sorry, what was that?
I have a question. Measure S, this is that roadways?
No, no, this would be in the, basically the storm drainage.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a separate fund for that.
Thank you. That answered my question. I have a couple others. As I recall, back in the 60s, that they used to have a channel, but it was away from the roadway. It was closer to the slopes. Has that channel moved?
I can't speak from a historical point of view there. I've been with the city about five years. That basically is my understanding, that it's just been all filled up with sediment because there hasn't been maintenance. The city did not have the permits to go in there and do the maintenance. And so as part of this, when we restore it, we'll have the permits to basically do the maintenance and basically keep this clear. I mean, of course, with the appropriate planting in there. So it won't get overgrown in the current capacity that it's in right now.
Okay, so, and correct me if I'm wrong, but that used to be pretty clear there at the base of Iris Canyon. And they had logs so that people didn't drive across the flatland. Is that still there, the logs?
Ooh, I can't speak to that. I don't, I don't know. I don't. Were they in the lower portion? Is that, is that what you're referring to?
Correct. On the flatland there, as it comes down the slope and it, it goes down into the catch basin. That typically was always fairly flat, but sometimes trees grew up in it and then they were cut down. But the last I saw, it was cut down and had logs in place so that you couldn't drive it and park down there anymore on the flatland.
Oh, yes. Okay, so that's upstream of that. And, and currently, as I recall, there are still logs adjacent to that so that people do not go camping in that area. That, that's, that's correct. Yeah.
Okay, on a two to one basis, you're going to dig a channel that's two to five feet deep down to the catch basin? Is that it?
I'm going to look at the cross-sections here.
That was in the material, that the depth would be two to five feet.
That's correct. Yeah, I'm just verifying here. In some sections, it's two. In some sections, it's five. It doesn't really, it doesn't look like it's greater than five. I'm scanning through the one section where it is five. But I don't see anything greater than five. And so adjacent to the roadway as a, just a follow-up. So that's an environmentally sensitive area. So hmm. I think this might be a consideration that we, there's a five foot between the Iris Canyon Road and the environmental, environmentally sensitive area. So that, that could be a possibility that we place logs there again, you know. To prevent, to prevent people from driving and parking there.
Well, that's always a consideration in the past.
Right.
My last question goes to the material that's being evacuated. It, the material that you gave us says that it's to be evacuated to one of two sites, but basically to the dump.
Right.
Is that for reuse reclaimed or is it going as garbage?
At this point, I really can't answer that. So, you know, we're, we're restoring with a couple of projects, you know, in progress right now. The Washer Woman's and the Lagunita, although contracts are being signed, but we have bid those. And so that sediment was originally deemed to go to the Marina landfill because of the content of the toolies. Now, this isn't the same situation here. That can't be received there. It's got to be separated because they, there's something with the toolies and accepting those. So possible, it's possible that this, much of this could be green waste and could be accepted by the Marina landfill. Yeah, so it could be reused.
That's what I was looking for because typically sediment is, is prime bottom land, so.
Yes, yes.
Okay, yeah. Any other questions of, on the project? Now let's see if we can open up any public comment.
Thank you, Chair Brassfield, for the public. And this should be also on the bottom of your screen. The call-in number is 831-225-0330. And at this time, we have no calls waiting, but I will wait just about a minute.
Thank you.
And just because we have the minute, the phone number is 831-225-0330. We don't appear to have anyone calling in. If they do, I will let you know. I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. Let's bring it back to the commission. Any comments?
This is Haunton. Mike, I was, I just went on Google Earth and I was looking at the logs. They're actually, appear to be on the other side of the road from the creek bed. But on the flatline, just that there was more of a comment than anything else. I was, I think I was on NIP when this, the funding originally was approved for, for doing this. I remember Les saying, you know how to, to eat an elephant, right? One bite at a time. So you know, that this is, was, you know, I think part of the, the initial NIP funding for this was just, you know, let's do a small section of it. It's great to, to me, I would like to see this done. It seems like it needs to be something that needs to be done and it would improve it for the future. That's all, I really, other than that, I think the negative debt is fine. So I don't have any issues or comments beyond that.
Thanks, Haunton. Any other comments by the commission? Wow. Okay, I, I was also in NIP back when this thing came on the agenda. So I support the idea. Do I have a motion?
I move. I move to adopt a mitigated negative declaration for the Iris Canyon sediment removal project, including removal of sediment and recontouring the 1,200 linear square foot segment of Iris Canyon Channel.
Should be linear.
Yeah.
1,200 linear foot segment of the Iris Canyon Creek Channel.
Thanks, Andy. Do I have a second?
So, second, Haunton.
Haunton reads second. I'll call for the vote. All in favor would say aye.
I just need to do a roll call.
And we'll do the roll call.
Thanks. Chair Brassfield?
Yes.
Vice Chair Freeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson?
He recused himself.
Oh, thank you. Commissioner Fletcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa?
Aye.
Commissioner Milich?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes with one abstention. And we'll move on, I believe, to item four.
Just a quick thing, it's not an abstention, it's a recusal. So he wasn't part of the meeting at all for that, so.
Okay, he recused himself. We'll move on to item four, the recommendation.
Are we going to let him know he can come back in?
I guess. Can someone give him a call?
Actually, he was still on the line, but not participating. So he should be right here.
Thank you.
I took the tape off the lens.
Okay. We have a.
You know, you could have turned the camera off, right?
Who would want to do that?
Consideration, consider recommending to city council the adoption of a mitigated negative declaration and approval for a use permit to amend CHOMP PC plan and allow development of a parking lot. Basically, 200 parking places to include a slope greater than 25%. Is that correct?
That is correct. I'm just going to add a little bit more. The project site address is 23795 Holman Highway. The applicant owner is the community hospital of the Monterey Peninsula, also known as Montage Health. It's in the planned community district with a commercial land use general plan designation. And with that, I'll turn it over to Chris Schmidt, our associate planner, who has been working on this project.
Thanks, Kim.
Thank you, Kim. Yes, my name is Chris Schmidt. I'm a senior associate planner for the city. I've been working with the applicant on this project. I will go ahead and present my screen now.
Looking good.
All right. So yes, we are looking at a parking expansion project for the community hospital. And the staff recommendation is to adopt resolutions recommending city council adoption of a mitigated negative declaration and a use permit adopting a PC plan amendment and also allowing development on slopes greater than 25%. So just a little bit of background information, and I also wanted to explain some acronyms that I will frequently refer to throughout the presentation. So of course, CHOMP refers to the community hospital of the Monterey Peninsula, which serves the peninsula area. It is the closest hospital to the local peninsula cities with the nearest hospital about 20 miles away in Salinas, Salinas Valley Memorial Hospital. Just some, some, some facts from CHOMP's website. In 2018, CHOMP had almost 13,000 admissions, 53,000 emergency visits, and 348,000 outpatient visits. So they have a high volume of service and have displayed the need for additional parking at their, at their facilities. So the Carmel Hill Professional Center, or CHPC, is, is located directly adjacent to where the project site is, and I will show that on the following slide with an aerial map. So in general, CHOMP provides a wide range of services at various locations. And they've got over 2,000 employees, so they are a major economic driver to the city. And then one, one key or important fact is that they have been recognized by the Transportation Agency of Monterey County for providing permit off-site parking and shuttle programs. And they've done that for, I believe, almost 30 years now, and we're commended for that. So moving on to the project location. Here we see the project site in orange. It's kind of an estimated location. And then you can see the CHPC adjacent to that and the CHPC lot with a star on the lowest portion, lowest starred lot. I put stars on the, the three different parking lots that, that CHOMP has at, at the hospital. And they contain about 1,065 existing parking spaces to provide for their current services. And that's for both employees and visitors. Some other important information. The site is zoned planned community and has a general plan land use designation of commercialized, Kim mentioned. The site is bound by Highway One and Scenic Drive. This is a, Scenic Drive is kind of an interesting road. It actually is in, it provides connectivity for Pebble Beach. There's actually no public entrance to Scenic Drive other than going through some of the Pebble Beach gates. So the, the CHOMP sites are a bit fragmented in terms of, of, you know, their, this location, this southern location versus the CHOMP main campus site. And, and if you also notice, I do have a line that's kind of intersecting, going kind of across Scenic Drive. And that's, that's actually a pathway or a rough location of a pathway that the employees use when they park in this CHPC lot if they're going to do their shift at CHOMP. Moving on to the next slide, the project description.
Before you do that, what is T A M C?
I'm sorry?
What is T A M C? You had that on your first slide.
Transportation agency for Monterey County.
Oh, sorry. Yes. Thank you for that question. Yes. So T A M C is the transportation agency, which, which recommended CHOMP for their parking management. Yeah, good question. So moving on, the project description is a PC plan amendment, which is really just the, the 200-space parking lot project adjacent to the CHPC lot. And as I mentioned, this parking is for existing hospital employees. No expansion of CHOMP facilities or otherwise. Just a little bit of permit history. So in 1994, the adjacent CHPC lot was completed. It added approximately, I think it was about 100 additional spaces to serve future, future demands of, you know, new services and the next product, which is the 2001 Forest Pavilion Patient Bed Wing Expansion. So that project was subsequently completed after, after it was approved in 2001. And then in 2019, we received a new application for this project. So I've shown this site plan showing the proposed project in relation to the existing parking lot, which you can see to the left of the orange. And then again, the CHPC Carmel Hill Professional Center is on the southern side. the CHPC Carmel Hill Professional Center is on the southern side, uh, and then the Carmel Hill Care Center or Beverly Care Center is located west there. Um, this is just a project, uh, a project site map of of the project itself, and I think the key point here is um you can see these shaded areas which uh constitute the areas that exceed twenty-five percent, and I will show a different image highlighting those areas later in the in the presentation. Uh, and then also the two starred areas, which are the identified wetland areas, uh, and which which I will also discuss later. Um, the two of uh the key features that I wanted to display to the planning commission are these these retaining walls, and this is the the wall number one, uh, that is on the north side of the new lot. Uh, and and if you can see, I've got the site plan on the bottom left, uh, basically showing kind of an aerial view of these proposed walls, and then these the uh upper image is that elevation. Uh, and so it's really difficult to see uh how tall these are. It's about, I I think it's about seventeen feet, fifteen feet, and eight feet uh at these divisions here. Uh, this wall is proposed to be to use a shock treat design, so the image on the bottom right shows how they're constructed. Basically, they use some sort of a structural rebar uh structure to to basically structurally secure the wall, and then they spray concrete and and ultimately sculpt it uh into some sort of design uh that that serves to hold up hold up the earth there. Uh, the other retaining wall is on the south side of the new lot. Uh, this wall is proposed to use uh an M S E mechanically stabilized earth methodology of construction. Uh, the image here shows, uh, basically, they they create these, and and this is one method for M S E walls, they create these rebar cages, which they then backfill with um, you know, earth material, and they ultimately serve to, again, retain retain the development on the bottom side. Um, you know, the applicant didn't specifically say which method of M S E walls uh they would use. Uh, other methods often use uh concrete that is then also backfilled, and so we can certainly get to that as we move to a design review phase. Um, another another part of the project is uh the proposed tree removal. So this shows the development area, showing in red the trees that would be removed for the project. Uh, the blue uh Xs are are trees that the arborist identified, uh, are in poor condition but not part of the project, uh, not part of the project's proposal for removal. Uh, so in red, we have four hundred and seventeen uh trees proposed for removal, two hundred and twenty-nine of which are Monterey pine trees, one hundred and seventy-one are coastal live oak, uh, and then the remaining are mostly sea anothus and a few Monterey cypress trees. Uh, and just some some facts about the the uh tree removals and 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 forests. Uh, so eight hundred and fifty trees were surveyed, four hundred and seventeen proposed for removal, and this consists of about one point nine acres of lost forest. Um, and this forest is a uh mature pine forest uh with declining health, and that was identified in the project arborist reports and also identified by the city's forester. Uh, and this this uh is evident with the pitch canker, dwarf mistletoe, red ring conch, and bark beetles, which are uh parasitic plants or diseases which damage the trees, and then bark beetles will tend to eat the trees. Uh, and then also, small and large trees appear to have uh significant structural problems. Previous previous SEQA documents had indicated that uh the CHP campus contains fragmented urban forest, so there were basically uh areas where the site had, the the forest had been broken up due to development of things like roads or trails or those other types of things that basically fragmented this forest um as a whole. Uh, so the applicant has proposed a one-to-one replanting ratio, um, and has identified fourteen areas for replanting, uh, and they've got kind of two methodologies to do that, individual replacement, uh, and then also a method where they chip uh the trees that are removed, they chip the the boughs and cones uh and create a twelve-inch bed, which will basically uh allow seedlings to develop naturally from the lineage that is currently existing there rather than bringing in new trees from a nursery that's that's not necessarily native to this microclimate and and ecosystem. Uh, the applicants also proposed tree protection uh during uh the replanting phase uh and and uh would attempt to accomplish an eighty percent success rate uh for replanting after three years. Uh, so here I show the fourteen different locations, uh, with uh the stars, you'll see those are the areas where individual plantings are proposed, and I have some slides to follow. Um, and then the remaining locations would would use the chip methodology. And here we see the individual plantings. Here as well. Uh, so moving on to view from the right-of-way. So the applicant provided uh this graphic showing the view impact from uh both Scenic Drive and Highway One. Um, you know, that I think I think the, I mean, I think that it's most important to uh try to limit any views of of uh of a development along the scenic highway, of course, and I think that this this development will will really not be visible because of the topography. And I do have some topo maps uh later in the later in the presentation that show that there's generally a very steep incline from uh, you know, anywhere really along the highway there. Uh, it it the the incline goes up about forty feet before it flattens out and starts to increase again, and so, you know, I don't really think that we can even see uh in the foreground of that bottom image, the trees that are being proposed for removal. Uh, so the remaining of the presentation is is structured kind of in four different sections, starting with SEQA, uh, and the mitigation measures staff is recommending to be required, uh, the three comments that were received, uh, and then moving on to the general plan policies, because they really do apply to both the planned community plan adoption uh or amendment adoption and the C U P. Um, so the initial study identified uh several uh areas where there may potentially significant impacts, uh, starting with aesthetics, agriculture slash forestry resources, biological resources, noise, and transportation. Uh, staff is recommending mitigation measures uh that would reduce all potential effects to less than significant levels. Uh, so starting with mitigation measure for a mitigation measure AES one for aesthetics, I would require the applicant to install light fixtures on pools of similar heights as the existing parking lot uh at the CHPC, uh, motion sensors and dimming sort of dimming features to uh reduce the overall lighting and intensity impact. Um, next is the forestry, really, really mainly forestry uh mitigation measures, um, the first being the requirement for a forest land mitigation plan. Um, and I think the key point here is we're we're asking that the applicant mitigate loss of one point nine acres at a two-to-one ratio, so three point eight acres. Um, and they can do that uh with tree replacement, so planting and seedling recruitment, as I mentioned, um, but that would be the max, uh, fifty percent would be the max, so they can basically replace uh at a one-to-one uh the the forest that's being lost, and then that remaining one point nine acres, it will have to uh show some effort to uh conserve for forests, uh, either through conservation easements on or off-site, uh, or develop a forestry management plan for on or off-site forest, and also contribute money or or uh maintain those forests uh in a in a way that would uh adequately uh mitigate the loss of the habitat. Uh, the next mitigation measure uh requires tree protection during construction. Uh, the bio uh B I O one construction monitoring measure uh is is a typical measure. It requires construction monitoring to prevent uh direct impacts to coast horn lizard and coast new coast range nudes, uh, and then also three other mitigation measures, uh, which require pre-construction surveying for uh Monterey husky wood rat, pallid bat, and nesting bird species. Uh, the noise mitigation measure uh requires the applicant to limit the impacts from the temporary construction, and really that uh includes things like uh hourly limitations or or time of day limitations of construction activity, um, also, you know, locating loud equipment away, you know, as far as possible away from sensitive receptors. Uh, those are the types of mitigation. Uh, and then lastly, mitigation measure for uh potential traffic impacts uh requires the applicant to extend the highway center median to prevent illegal left turns uh both to and from the driveway entrance to the site, uh, and this would require a Caltrans encroachment permit. So staff received three letters uh regarding these the mitigated negative declaration. Uh, the first two were from Caltrans and T A M C, the Transportation Agency of Monterey County, uh, and they supported the traffic mitigation measure to extend extend the median. Uh, the last letter was received from California Coastal Commission uh staff, a coastal planner for the coastal commission, and there they had had three main points. The first requesting that a jurisdictional waters and wetlands delineation be prepared according to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers uh three parameter methodology. Um, and so I just wanted to make the point that the training drainage features were delineated based on the coastal commission's uh one parameter approach, which I believe tends to be a more conservative approach, uh, and the the negative declaration did identify wetland wetlands under the Coastal Act definition. So no direct impacts were identified and no further delineation was determined to be necessary. Uh, the next point they made was uh to determine coastal act wetlands, which I just mentioned the the document did, uh, and assess an appropriate buffer, and the document did that as well. The project biologist recommended a a ten-foot buffer, uh, and it's worth mentioning that this is different than the one hundred foot buffer that coastal staff typically recommends, but I believe the uh biologist found that based on the size and conditions and functions of the wetlands, it's really a a uh, these wetlands were really created from parking lot and existing parking lot runoff, uh, they determined that there would be no uh potential impact with the ten-foot buffer. Uh, and then lastly, coastal staff requested uh that the M and D assess the project site as environmentally sensitive habitat areas, uh, specifically as defined by the Coastal Act, uh, and the project biologists provided a response uh and and kind of reiterated some of the points that were made in their previous reports, that the site does not appear to be uh ESHA under the Coastal Act definition, uh, and that's for a number of reasons. This site has degraded habitat conditions, limited potential to support special status species, fragmentation, and presence of invasive and non-native species. So moving on to the general plan policies, we've got a number of policies that are relevant to the project, uh, starting with the economic element, policy C eleven, uh, really just, it's a city policy to support healthcare providers, and uh that includes hospitals. Uh, next is the pub public facilities element, goal G. Um, this this goal uh is just to continue supporting healthcare facilities uh that provide efficient and cost-effective services. Uh, and then urban design element, policy H seventeen, uh, request that uh we avoid further illumination from the community hospital, which I think we've attempted to do with the mitigation measures, uh, the aesthetics mitigation measure regarding lighting. Uh, and then uh the last policy that I wanted to discuss uh has to do with the use permit requests uh for developments on slopes exceeding twenty-five percent. Uh, so it's a three kind of a three-part policy from the safety element, policy B one. Um, I've included A and C on this slide, and I'll move on to B. So A and C basically prohibits slopes on new lots um that are created to provide new building slides, so this is not a new lot. Uh, development is prohibited within active landslide areas, this is not an active landslide area. Um, so kind of the main point and and what the uh planning commission request is. Uh, so this this policy uh basically says you we must prohibit development on slopes over twenty-five percent grade on existing lots, uh, and only allow minimal encroachment into those the sloped areas. Uh, the design must minimize impacts to adjacent properties and right-of-way, uh, and also minimize visual appearance, removal of trees, and vegetation impacts. B continued is uh, and and I'll basically paraphrase this, uh, the planning commission shall determine that the location and slope restricts development potential uh that an exception is is warranted or is is necessary. So uh, in the case of this project, uh, staff has found that the slopes really do restrict the development potential of of this project or or any subsequent projects uh that may occur on adjacent properties as well. And so I've uh, this is the same uh site plan that that shows topography, and I've just highlighted the uh the sloped areas here in in this orange color within the actual development impact area. Uh, this is about forty percent of of the impact area has has slopes that are twenty-five percent or greater. And then I also just wanted to provide some context of what the surrounding area really looks like. Um, as you can see, the the uh project site is proposed adjacent to this this southern parking lot, uh, and uh CHP uh owns and and has um, you know, maybe long-range plans, nothing nothing submitted yet for development of these lots as well, uh, and those are ingrained in the uh, excuse me, the skyline land use plan. Um, so yeah, we've we've got a lot of topography, and as I mentioned before, uh, regarding the view impact uh slide, uh, the slope is really greatest along the highway, uh, and then it flattens out before it continues to go back up. Uh, so moving on to the planned community zoning district, so uh what is it? Uh, so this this zoning district uh was created to really uh allow for flexibility on development of large parcels, so it reduces rigidity, rigidity, conflict, and delays from zoning standards, uh, where, you know, maybe a variance may be required. It allows greater freedom to development standards, uh, as basically we develop these plans that essentially are development standards. Uh, and then it also provides a mechanism to allow uh developments which, you know, are consistent with the general plan and area plans, but may not be allowed by the zoning districts that are traditionally really formed for smaller, more uniform lots. Uh, so uh regarding the uh PC plan amendment request, so the two thousand and one plan uh identifies, the two thousand and one CHP amended PC plan identifies the project site uh to be reserved for long-range future development in accordance with the skyline L U P. Um, and so the L U P really does identify this site for parking uh and or commercial office uses. Uh, and so this proposed project is uh proposing to incorporate the PC plan, which is essentially the project plans and associated studies and documents uh into the two thousand and one plan. Uh, and so the two thousand and one plan, as I mentioned, has uh plans for development of these sites, both this site and the site that's kind of northeast of the site, and those include cardiac support camp, a cardiac support campus, a residential village, skilled nursing facility, assisted living residential units, and parking. Um, so I'm going to basically go through each finding for a PC plan adoption. Um, I I don't think that the planning commission has seen one of these in a while, so bear with me as I go through each one. Uh, so the PC plan uh must be consistent with the general plan and relevant area plans. So the PC plan must be consistent with the general plan and relevant area plans. It is consistent with the general plan and the Skyline Land Use Plan, and it is compatible with the surrounding development. The next finding is that the PC plan will enhance the potential for superior urban design in comparison with the development under the base district regulations that would apply if the plan were not approved. So basically, the point here is that the base districts were really intended for smaller, you know, more uniformly shaped and generally flatter lots. So that's why these sites have been zoned PC is because they are fairly unique in their composition. The next finding is that deviations from the base district regulations are justified by the compensating benefits of the PC plant scope. You know, the main point I think that I'd like to make is that generally the base district regulations, which this has got a commercial base district, would prohibit things like the retaining walls, where the maximum height for retaining walls is six feet. That just may not be possible on this type of site for a development that's similar in scope. And then the benefits of this project are meeting some of the operational parking demands that the hospital is facing right now. And if you've been able to visit the hospital lately, it's always, well, ever since I could remember, it's always been a very difficult task of actually finding parking. The next finding is that the PC plan does not need additional provisions for expansion of utility services or emergency vehicle access, and that is because that no new patient services will be expanded. The hospital is located really just right there and has adequate, and the parking lot would have adequate emergency vehicle access. And then lastly, the last finding is that the public service demands will be met by the plan, and this project is really proposed in order to meet the service demands. Moving on to the conditionally use permit findings, and I know that the planning commission is more familiar with these, so I won't spare you from reading these straight off the slide. So the project is consistent with the objectives of the zoning ordinance. It promotes the public health, general safety, et cetera. And additional parking will be provided for public facilities, which would further allow the hospital to maintain its high level of service. The project implements the policies of the general plan, and it is consistent with the plan, and then lastly, is consistent with the Skyline Plan's vision for parking or commercial offices. The next finding has to do with the consistency with the general plan and impacts to safety, health, residents, workers, nearby properties, or infrastructure, and the project has been designed to limit impacts to the surrounding area and infrastructure. And then lastly, the project will, or the applicant rather, will be required to comply with any specific use required, and staff has included conditions and mitigation measures, which the applicant will be required to follow through with. So yes, lastly, and to reiterate, staff recommends adoption of resolutions, or excuse me, recommends city council adoption of mitigated negative declaration and use permit, adopting a PC plan amendment and allowing development on slopes greater than 25%. I'm available for questions, and the applicant is here as well.
I have a question. I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
You mentioned that you had met the requirements from the Coastal Commission when they responded to the project. Now, do you need to go back and get some sort of acknowledgement that you've met their conditions?
You know, under CEQA, we're not required to provide a response. You know, the applicant is going to have to get a coastal development permit, where they will certainly have to address those comments.
Okay.
Yeah.
Second question, this idea of the site having a slope that's greater than 25%, I am sure it must have a variety of slope percentages. What is the greatest slope that it has? If it's greater than 25%, how much greater is it?
That's a good question. I don't know it off the top of my head, but I can quickly try to calculate it if we've got other questions.
And then one other thing is you suggested that there were two kinds of building of the big retaining wall, and you showed illustrations of both of them. Is there any possibility that we're going to be looking at a third possibility, which are the airport pyramids?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure. Oh, you mean along Highway 68?
Yeah.
The hanging, the hanging towers of Babylon?
Yeah, yeah, and the pyramids, yeah. So are we sure that the only two kinds of construction techniques for these retaining walls are the two that you showed? But I think a lot of people would be upset if we went into the Hanging Gardens again.
Yeah, yeah, no. So, you know, I think, I think what the airport has used is a mechanically stabilizer design. Is it going to be as massive as that design? It certainly will not be. The highest point is 15 feet, and like I said, I do not think it will actually be visible from the highway, and the applicant is proposing a significant amount of landscaping to hide that wall.
And just to add on, Commissioner Freeman, this is Kim Cole, Community Development Director. The actual finish of the walls and the replanting plan will require an architectural review permit, so there are opportunities to work on the finishing of that exterior wall design.
Thank you.
This is Hudson. Question is that has, I understand that the view impacts from Highway 1 and Highway 68 are taken into consideration, but have view impacts from downhill looking uphill? Part of the charm of Monterey is seeing mountains and not seeing houses. Has that view been looked at at all? It doesn't seem like it in the packet at all. It only talks about highway views and just views right there. But I mean, again, if I'm down on the wharf and I look up, what do I see? Will I see that? Has that been even thought of at this point in time?
That's a, that's a really great question, Hudson. I did use Google Earth to basically set myself at the wharf, at the commercial wharf, and look towards where the highway is located, and it appeared to me, and I verified that by looking at topographical data, is that this area is actually kind of set next to where there's another ridge that basically comes out in front, if you can imagine, in between the parking lot and the wharf, if that makes sense. So immediately adjacent to the project site, there's kind of a really shallow ridge, but it still appears as if you will not really see the loss of trees from that location.
And Chris, to verify that, I can think you can bring up the topography map of the area that you showed in your presentation to show the topography that this sort of sits down a little bit more in a gully here, if you want to show that to Commissioner Reed.
Yeah, but so then the response really is that nothing has been done other than an informal look, right? That's.
Well, maybe an educated evaluation is how I would look at it. It's like, where are the view impacts? The view impacts are from Highway 1 and Highway 68 are protected view corridors. We, of course, can come back with additional view analysis from other parts of Monterey, but there is a ridgeline that sort of breaks it off, and I see that the civil engineer is on the call, and he may be able to answer that more specifically for those numbers.
Yeah, and when we get to comments, I can, you know, go on further about this, but just to throw it out there, that's a huge, huge issue for me.
Mike Dawson here. Is the CHOMP visible from the wharf? Because I think the CHOMP, the hospital itself is taller than the parking lot.
I would have to go and check again, which I certainly can do.
Chris, this is Kim. I don't hear any sound. Is there a problem with the meeting?
No, I'm here. I'm sorry, I was, I was just trying to pull up Google Earth.
Thank you.
Commissioners would like to see it.
They call it dead air in the business.
So, and it's, it's really challenging to see from this street view, but essentially the hospital and kind of the highway goes where we see this dip, where you see a couple of light and transmission poles, and I think probably the best way is to view it from, sorry, this application can be challenging sometimes. Okay, I'm gonna have to mess with it. I apologize, I should have had this up before. Anyway, I will just go to the hospital, and we can look at that bridge and kind of work our way back, so. Okay, so the project site is adjacent to this lot here. These are the trees proposed for removal, and this is kind of the ridge that I had mentioned. And I'm struggling. So at this elevation, you know, obviously the hospital can be visible, but as we continue to go back and down, you kind of lose it, and I know it's not that easily identifiable. Certainly could have done a better job preparing that, but it's about as good as I can get it today, I'm sorry. Here we go. Okay. So I'm not sure if everybody was able to basically follow where, where I started and where I am now.
This is Hudson. You did a good job. That's great. That helps a lot. It looks like that it's behind that ridge, and really the biggest impact would be from one, not from down the hill. So I mean, I'm satisfied. Thanks. That was, that was extremely helpful for me.
Steve, you had a comment?
Yeah, I wanted to know if there's a maintenance program in there regarding the trees that are replanted or the removal of dead trees that would be a fire hazard in a very, very sensitive fire zone.
Yeah, are you talking about trees specifically in just the project impact area or kind of in the surrounding area as well?
Well, let's do both.
Yeah, so, sorry. So the project arborist did identify, you know, an additional 400 trees that he's recommended for removal that are not within the development impact area. Those are not proposed at this time as part of this project for removal, although I believe CHOMP still intends to basically clean up that forest in the rear there, and, you know, they can certainly do so as part of the forestry mitigation measure that we want to require, which requires, you know, additional either conservation or forestry management or those types of things.
What about the second one? What about the ones that are being taken out and replaced?
Yeah, so the ones that would be taken out, you know, I, I don't know the entire logistics of what happens to them, you know, from the time that they're cut and to the time that they're either, you know, stored or stockpiled or whatever it is, and then subsequently chipped, and then, and then spread out to be new seeding material. I imagine that CHOMP is going to hopefully remove those materials as soon as they possibly can, although I don't have those details.
So there's nothing about maintaining them once they're planted? And the city has no say in selecting the stock that's being used to be.
Sure, so, yeah, no, it's a good question. So I was referring to what would happen when they would be removed. When they do replant them, they've got specific parameters for, for example, the chip material seedlings, where as the new seedling sprout, they're going to have to clear the surrounding area of those most viable seedlings to ensure that those seedlings are able to survive and then thrive, right? So they will have to do maintenance over that three-year period to try to achieve their 80% success rate, and if they don't achieve it, they will have to basically continue maintenance and see if replanting is the appropriate route to go.
Chris, on that, on that point, I have a question.
I'm sorry, Mr. Millet, did you have a?
They'll have to do it for three years based upon what, the permit?
It's proposed as part of the project, which was included in the CEQA document, that they're going to have to ensure an 80% success of those new seedlings over a three-year period.
And that's enforced by?
It's mitigation. I mean, it's, it's part of their proposed project.
But how do we enforce that?
It can be included with their forestry mitigation as part of their land management plan, their forest land management plan. You know, I mean, we ultimately enforce what the applicant proposes. They have to build what we approve.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, this is Tara Latassa. Thanks, Chris, for your excellent presentation. So can I request that you put up page 80 of Exhibit A? It's the grading plan. Sorry, but it'll help, I think.
Do you, is that what, packet page, are you?
Well, no, it's page 80 of Exhibit A. It's the grading plan.
Okay. I think this is it. Is this what you're referring to, Jake?
Yeah, that's it. So if you look at the left side of that drawing, you can see it says, you know, State Route 1 there, right-of-way. See, it's written at an angle, and then just next to that is the, that would be the southernmost, I guess, part of this entire parking lot. That's where it comes closest to the State Route 1 property line. And it's, I think that's where the on-ramp, or rather be, well, I think it's an off-ramp or an on-ramp from Highway 1 at that point. My question is, how far from the edge of the pavement is that one, you know, the leftmost part of the parking lot where it appears as though those retaining walls are six to eight feet tall?
Yeah, let me see if I can find the graphic, because the actually, the development is actually proposed fairly far away from the actual existing right-of-way.
It looks like it's 20 or 30 feet there. It looks like it's 20 or 30 feet there. But it could be also that the actual edge of pavement is another 50 feet, you know, inside of that right of way. It's hard to tell.
Yeah, I do think that is the case. Give me one second. I think I have a slide that I might show.
Well, maybe, you know, maybe you don't have to answer that question right now, Chris.
I think this actually shows a good depiction of where the property line is as it is, you know, located relevant to the, relative rather to the on-ramp there. So that, you know, I don't know the exact distance and I can estimate that.
Okay, I guess my biggest concern, my question really is relating to that thing out on Highway 68. That's the new, you know, car park area that was supposedly adequately screened, but now it's really, it's really become a visual issue. I would hate to repeat that exercise here. You know, had there been any consideration maybe of putting some orange netting on to show those, because 17-foot-high retaining walls are quite high? And if they were visible from the roadway, it would be a visual issue. And although it still could be screened. So was there any consideration of actually staking out those higher retaining walls?
You know, we did, we did talk to the applicant about it, and unfortunately, it was, it was kind of after, after the notices for the project had gone out and they were not able to put that up. I think, you know, if if we were to take the project to the city council, I did request that, you know, even if we could get it, get that done before the city council, that might be the best time to do it since they could not.
Okay, and just to look more, one more time at this grading plan, can you pull up that page 80, the grading plan again? Sorry.
That's okay.
Just that. Now, is it not true that the top of that wall is at, is at is at ground level? The top of the dark wall that we see, is that not at ground level?
The top of that wall, on the northernmost wall, is basically at the level of the existing parking lot.
Right. So if you can't see it now, you can't see it then?
Well, I don't know. A 17-foot retaining wall above existing grade is pretty high.
It's not above. It is at grade.
At one edge, but if you go down the hill, it's 17 feet high. So that's, that, that actually, if you look at that grading plan in detail, you'll actually see existing grades of around 80, and the proposed parking lot elevation is around 97. So that's, you know, that's a lot. I'm, I think we're all concerned with the visual impacts of Highway 1. And my, my point is, I just have a few points like, well, looking at this grading plan, starting at the very left part, you can see that's just a retaining wall there for about 60 feet. Then you move to the right and it starts becoming one of those shotcrete kind of walls. And I think somewhere in the middle is where the 17-foot height thing is happening. You know, it gradually changes as it, and then on the far right is where it basically meets grade. That's my understanding of this. So I just want to make sure that we, you know, that the city council is able to really analyze the view impacts and also the lighting impacts of all these light standards that are going to go on this parking lot. Finally, I noticed on your conditions, I didn't see a condition requiring ARC approval. Is that later or is that just sort of assumed?
You know, I think that, I mean, it comes at a later date. We would require it regardless. I think there was a question of, you know, whether it goes to ARC, which I think this project would have to, so.
I would hope so, because there are, you know, lighting and the screening of these walls could turn out to be important, but we wouldn't know that unless it was, you know, really analyzed with netting. So that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Any other questions of Chris? I have a couple of questions. And by the way, this in my mind would have been a great site for a field trip.
Oh, yeah.
But these walls, if you look down at Highway 1, it's about a five-foot retaining wall. But the debris is overflowing it now and going into the roadway. So we do have a problem with debris going into the water system. Has any discussion been made on the tops of these walls in that issue? That the grade will continue and can be a hazard?
Could you clarify your question? I'm not sure I understand it.
Okay, if you have a wall that's up to 17 foot tall, but you have a continuing slope going uphill, debris goes downhill.
Sure.
And frequently overflows an edge if it is at that grade. Have we, have that been discussed?
You know, the only part of the project that might relate to that is the stormwater requirements. And I know that obviously debris and stormwater are entirely different. So no, we haven't talked about debris coming down, down the hill from the new project.
Well, that's, that's the problem with an uphill slope. Things go downhill. And that means anything going over the edge, that's a, that's a pretty big fall. If it was another tree or part of a tree. Second question is, did you give a percentage of oaks to pine trees in that presentation?
I did not give a percentage. I believe of the 417 trees, 229 are pines. So a little bit more than 50%, and then 171 are oaks.
Okay, now for replacement trees, is it going to be at that same percentage?
Yeah, I think that, I think that there's, the applicant intends to do, to do a one-to-one. You know, I think their arborist actually in their report mentioned that, that oak trees actually should be prioritized in replacement. Meaning I think the arborist wants more oak trees. On the other hand, I think the Coastal Commission wants more Monterey pine trees. So I'm personally leaning towards a one-to-one of the same ratio, same percentage.
In the material you read, when I, it said, and it just said replacing with pine trees. But the diversity of that area has a large percentage of oaks, and I just don't want to see us reducing that diversity. That's why I asked the question.
It's a good question.
Okay. You also mentioned that, it mentions in the material that the lights on the lot have motion detectors. Does that mean that they go off?
Correct.
So an employee coming back to the lot in the dark as they come out of, off the trail or out of the building, and they walk into a corner of the parking lot, is that going to be dark?
No, and actually, let me clarify. I think that they probably, I mean, they probably have various settings, but I think, I think in all likelihood, they may dim to a lower setting when no one's around and there's no movement. And as you approach, they will light up to a much lighter setting. And maybe, you know, in the middle of the night, they turn off completely. I'm not entirely sure.
I consider that a danger in parking lots. And I think you need to make a note to have that, look at that, if you would. That basically covers the questions I have. Anybody else have any other questions? Okay, then I will open up to the applicant.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Anthony Lombardo, am I coming through okay?
A little slow, but good, Tony.
Looking good.
Okay, great. Thank you. On behalf of Community Hospital Montage Healthcare, the purpose for the parking lot is to meet the needs of our staff, our patients, and our visitors, because the current parking is insufficient to meet all of those demands. And so we're constructing this one to provide that extra capacity. I'll just briefly hit on a couple of the points that were, questions that were raised and make a couple of comments to try and address some of the concerns raised by the commission. As to the start, maybe with the latter couple, the slope issue. The wall that Commissioner's referenced being 17 feet high is the wall that's located at the area furthest away from the, from the highway. So that's, that's the upper part, upper wall at the top of the parking lot, which I think Commissioner Dawson correctly identified as being effectively at the current ground level with a downhill cut below the wall, not above the current ground elevation. And then it, the walls get smaller and smaller till you get down to Highway 1. But that 17-foot wall is approximately 300 feet from the off-ramp. And unlike, unlike when Highway 1 was built by Caltrans, now state law mandates that there be a stormwater detention plan that requires that stormwater be detained and retained onsite or retained and detained onsite. So it's not a matter of water cascading off the parking lot down onto Highway 1. The lights are down, downlights. They are designed not to be at full intensity unless someone is walking by or driving through the parking lot. And that's a, that's as I think staff said, that would be handled during the design approval process. The retaining wall visibility, another issue on retaining wall visibility was mentioned was that, I think, Commissioner Latassa mentioned the Hanging Garden of Babylon over there above Tarpees, which is a pretty apropos description. But that's certainly not what we're proposing here. You know, this, this wall at the highest is 17 feet. Not, that wall's got to be, what, 60-plus feet? I don't even know how tall that is. Also, this parking lot faces south, if you will, towards Highway 1 and Jack's Peak Park, and it is screened by the remaining forest. So it's, it's not actually even visible from anywhere for all practicality. If you think about Forest Pavilion, the Forest Pavilion facility is 35 feet high. The parking area we're talking about is going to be 15 feet below the ground level of Forest Pavilion. So it's effectively invisible to, to anywhere in Monterey and effectively from Highway 1 as well. Staff mentioned the wetlands environmentally sensitive habitat issue, and they provided you an excellent description of what we're doing and what we have done to address the comments by the Coastal Commission. As EMC Planning pointed out, they use the most stringent wetland delineation methodology to determine the extent of the wetlands, and we are set back from that, from the edge of those wetlands. And there is a conclusion, their conclusion is that there is no, there'll be no effect on the wetlands or their functioning. And of course, they're basically a man-created wetland, or wetlands created by the activity of road drainage. So there's not a natural wetland function there, like you would say at the mouth of Carmel River or something like that. There are two conditions I would briefly like to address, and then I'll turn it over to the rest of my colleagues on our team. If we have any other comments we'd like to add. Two issues regarding conditions. The first on tree replacement. As you may recall, in the early 2000s, they, when the Forest Pavilion was added, Community Hospital actually sort of pre-mitigated for a lot of removal because it dedicated 16 acres of Monterey pine forest into permanent conservation for development of approximately one acre. So we, we've already done, if you will, 16 to 1. As it relates to this project, we feel that one-to-one is adequate, not only because of the fact that we've already given roughly 16 to 1, but also because there are performance criteria. In other words, we will recreate one-for-one the forest that we are removing. So two-to-one or higher ratios that are sometimes used like by Caltrans are in expectation that reforestation programs are sometimes done with less-than-complete enthusiasm. And so they're only going to get about a 50% survival rate. But I'd like Mr. Bellinger to address our reforestation and forest management plans, because we believe one-to-one is adequate for, in this case. Finally, in closing, I'd like to reference the traffic median extension. There is apparently an issue involving current traffic which leaves, enters Highway 68 sometimes without following the traffic direction. That's a pre-existing condition, not related to this parking lot. And so we believe that that's a condition that Caltrans should probably remedy rather than placing that on the, on the burden of Community Hospital, especially since, and if I'm misdescribing this, I'm sure Mr. Nyland can speak, but I believe Mr. Nyland brought this to Caltrans' attention at the time those roundabout was being built. And the, suggested they extend the median, and they didn't do so. So those are our comments. We respectfully request your recommendation to the city council, because that's what it is tonight, for approval of the parking to allow our excellent hospital to provide more excellent service to its patients, visitors, and staff. Thank you.
Do you have any other staff making a presentation, Mr. Namara?
I believe Mr. Bellinger would like to speak on the tree issue, and then I don't know if anyone would like to add anything from our team, expand on what I said. Other than that, of course, we, if there's any public comment, we'd like to retain a few minutes to address that.
Okay. Do we have your representative?
So Chair Brassfeld, this is Kim Cole. Mike Bellinger's on the Google Hangout. He's also on the call. So it looks... Mike, if you want to unmute yourself on your computer, if not, I will unmute the telephone. Okay, so I'll just go ahead and unmute the telephone. Mike, can you hear me? This is line 1383?
Yes, I can.
Okay, the commission should be able to hear your comment. Thank you.
Hi, it's Mike Bellinger, EFS Landscape Park, Texas.
Oh, Mike, what I need you to do is move away from your computer if you can.
Hang on just a second.
I'm just...
Hi, it's Mike Bellinger. Is this connected?
Yes, we can hear you very well now. Thank you.
Okay, sure. Probably beginning in 1995, on the first project, we started doing expansion in the surrounding hospital for a variety of projects. And at that time, the city began requesting two- and three-year and five-year forest management plan reports to kind of provide the follow-up, I think, that someone was asking about with Community Hospital. And if you go and talk to the city forester, although it's not the same person anymore, maybe they could find reports that have been filed over the years. Chomp provides, they have an on-staff maintenance group. They contract with local arborists to remove dangerous trees. They are continually planting along scenic corridors, along highways, along adjacent properties to kind of mitigate the impact potentially of neighbors' concerns and comments. I think the most recently, when we met with the city forester up on site, they had just completed a project on the southernmost property edge to remove a variety of dangerous trees that the neighbors had called the city about that were actually on Chomp's property. And Chomp facilitated bringing all those trees down and mitigated all the neighborhood's concerns. So I think if you could speak with the city forester... So I think if you could speak with the city forester, they could probably support the initial presentation of the fact that Chomp provides consistent forest management over the property, primarily for fire danger and safety around the hospital. But in in over those twenty, twenty-five years, I think it's been like the constant dialogue with the city forester, with Department Forestry, that, you know, they don't necessarily replant every tree that's taken down because removing trees that are dangerous are typically trees that are past their maturity. And this opens up the forest and allows that natural diversity that one of the commissioners brought up. There's probably a one-to-one relationship between oak trees and pine trees on that property up there. So as 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 we call it a Monterey pine forest, it's really in a in its evolution of moving past the majority of Monterey pines into a lot more of a diverse coastal oak and understory environment ecosystem up there. So that's, if there's any other questions, if you have the answer, but that's kind of the long-term working relationship with forest management that Chomp has had with the city.
Thank you very much for your comment. Commissioner Brassfield, it's back to you.
Before we go any further, let's open it up for public comment.
Thank you very much. We have nobody on the phone right now, but I'll go ahead and share the phone number again. The call-in number is eight-three-one-two-two-five-zero-three-three-zero. That's eight-three-one-two-two-five.
You are the last party in the conference. You will hear silence until the conference begins.
Sorry about that. I'll get one more time. As I mentioned, there's no one else on the phone, but you can call in at eight-three-one-two-two-five-zero-three-three-zero.
Let's wait for just a few seconds, and then we'll open it up and leave in the option for people to still call in. Let's have the commission members express their concerns and opinions.
This is Hansen. My opinion was, or my concern was view impact, not just from the highway, but from down, you know, on the flat part of the peninsula of Monterey, looking up the hill. And I believe that that has been addressed. Chris, thanks. I would highly recommend you doing that or getting some sort before, when it goes, if it goes to council, presuming it gets approved, that, you know, that issue is is covered and and taken care of because I think that's, okay. The view down of the ocean is one thing, but looking up the hill is also an important view to protect. And I think it's looks like it's going to be be taken care of. I'm, I highly recommend that A R C look at this as well, just to make sure we don't have big walls. Can we, I mean, that would be my recommendation. I guess we're not really voting. We're just voting for a for a recommendation. But I would highly recommend that City Council put in as a condition that A R C is going to look at it and review the walls, look at screening and everything else. But otherwise, I mean, it's it's a project that needs to be done. The only other issue is, our comment that I want to make is whether or not the requirement to extend the median in the middle on Sixty-Eight. I understand Mr. Lombardo's position and opinion that this was already there beforehand, but by adding two hundred parking spaces, that's not just two hundred cars, that's many more cars throughout the day. And to me, that is an increase in impact that should require that the median on Sixty-Eight be extended such that you can't, when coming out of there, you cannot turn left on the Sixty-Eight, you have to go right on the Sixty-Eight. Those are my opinions.
Thank you. Good comment. Anybody else have comments?
My, Millich, my concerns about the the trees replanting and maintenance has been answered by staff and also by Mr. Bellinger. I think the requirement for three years plus Chomp's good neighbor policy and its own self-interest will regard it, will take care of the maintenance by itself.
Thank you.
And then I also echo what Commissioner Reed has said.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, this is Terry Latassa. So I also agree with Commissioner Reed. I I think the the screening of these walls, if necessary, is, that and the lighting are the two really important visual issues. And if it's conditioned properly by the council when they review it, then the A R C will hopefully do a good review of that. I would really like to request, I'm kind of a stickler for putting up that orange netting. If they could, you know, if they could make sure that they actually stake that wall, then that would assist the A R C so much in making that judgment. People seem to be afraid of netting that this wall wouldn't really be that difficult to 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 stake out. So the overall, though, I think it's a great project. There's a lot of tree removal, but they've hired just the absolute pros, Whitson and Bellinger Foster, and they're, they've done their typically excellent job at it. And I think Chris and the city also did a really great job. So I I'm in support of the project.
Any other comments?
Yes, Commissioner Fletcher here. I am also in support of the project. Before our presentation today, I came into this with two concerns, visibility and mitigation. And I'm fairly confident that both of the concerns have been met. I I wanted to make sure that there was some sort of plan in terms of replanting that it'd be checked upon, to make sure that it's compliant with the recommendations of of what can die and what can live and how that is done. So I am.
Thanks, Dan.
I also am in support of the program, but and I agree with what Terry and Hansen said. And I think that to protect the hospital and the city, really, the lighting and the construction of the wall really should be heard by the A R C. There is an example wall going into Hapoon Bay off of Highway Thirty-Five that looks exactly like what is proposed in proposal number one. But I think that the community will be heard from if they think that the lighting is going to be too severe. So having a firm grip on the construction of the wall and the lighting, I think, will necessitate review by the A R C. Otherwise, I think it's a great project.
Thanks, Eddie. Mike, you have any comments?
And my comment, my comment is about the lights. We all know that, you know, that a good down, down, downgrade hood will keep it from being visible from the highway, which is, I think, really important. And also, from the people that live just downhill in Monterey, those people, those people are the most concerned people I've ever met about fire danger. And so this is so important that we that we do this right, that that all of those, all of those, what, how can I say, widowmaker trees need to be, need to be dealt with because that that will be one of the, one of the big fuels for for a fire, a wildland fire if it starts, if it starts up there in that, in that big lot.
Thanks, Mike. One of the observations I'll make, when we went to Ryan Ranch not too long ago and looked at a new Chomp project, one of the issues we asked, was why is there so many trees here? Well, the answer was that Chomp had planted them way above what was normally be required, and so they had to thin them back out when they do their new building. So I appreciate the history that that Chomp has with taking care of the trees. Having said that, Monterey has lost something like ten thousand trees in the last few years. And I have real concerns that if we don't start planting some of these oaks, which are the hardest to grow, that we're going to lose that that biological diversity. It's easy to plant pine trees. It's a lot harder to maintain oak trees. So I would hope that one of the the issues that the the city looks at to the council is that they replace a fair percentage, the oaks and the pines. I'd like to address the lights because I agree with a lot of the other commission members that we have a walkway walking from down the hill from the main hospital, and this is going to be an employee parking lot. Having worked and handled cases at Chomp many years ago, parking, dark parking lots are a problem with nighttime employees. So a walk from the hospital or from the professionals' center to this parking lot, and then particularly if lights go out, there's a danger in that. And I I hope that in any plan going to A R C, they address that. So with having said that, I will ask if there's a motion on this consideration.
This is Hansen. I move that we recommend the City Council adopt a mitigated negative declaration for development of a two-hundred-space parking lot and P C Plan Amendment at two-three-seven-nine-five Holman Highway.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Yeah.
Dan, second?
Sorry, I just wanted to clarify if you obviously wanted to include development of twenty-five percent or greater slopes in that motion.
Correct.
Any other comments? Then I'll ask for a real call vote.
Chair Brassfield?
Yes.
Vice Chair Freeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa?
Aye.
Commissioner Millich?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Motion passed?
Thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome. We have item five, but I I assume that we're going to move on. And normally, we break at five-thirty. So what is your wishes?
Let's keep on going.
Let's soldier on.
Okay. Item five, recommend, consider recommendation to City Council to repeal and replace Monterey City Code Section Thirty-eight Twenty-Six G to allow home occupations without a separate permit process subject to the restrictions, subject to restrictions. Do we have a presentation?
We do. I'm just bringing it up. Thank you. Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. This afternoon, we're asking you to consider a recommendation to our City Council to actually repeal and replace a section of city code. And it's the section of the city code that addresses home occupation permits. And our proposal is to no longer require the permit, but they would continue to be subject to the restrictions and regulations that exist today. A home occupation is defined in our code as a business activity that's conducted in a residential unit that is incidental to the principal residential use of the lauder site. And basically, that's just a lot of planning language that says that the primary use of a site is residential, but you can still have a home occupation at the site. And the proposal is that home occupation businesses would become principally permitted uses subject to the existing regulations, so people would no longer have to apply for a special permit that reduces planning, processing efforts, fees, and eliminates time commitments to actually start up a home occupation business. So it'll essentially be easier for people to have a home occupation. We believe that it incentivizes small businesses, especially during this time where most people are working from home. And it really addresses the transformation of how business is being conducted now, as well as what we anticipate in the near future. And lastly, but most importantly, is that our code would continue to protect our neighborhoods from nuisance home businesses, which quite frankly have been far between on a code compliance level, but they do happen on occasion. And so our existing regulations would continue. Only the resident at the site can be engaged in the business. They can have a maximum of two employees, maybe working from their own home. The business cannot create a significant additional vehicle or pedestrian traffic. And this is probably what the condition, if we see a business violate, we get a complaint from a neighbor that there's additional cars going to the site, and upon investigation, we'll find that they might be violating their home occupation permit. So this rule would continue to exist, and we would still have an ability to bring that business into compliance with our regulations. There can be no business sign at the house. There can be no advertisement with the business address in a newspaper or any type of website or publication. There can be no visible storage or display on site and no exterior evidence of a home occupation at the location. Off-street parking is required to be retained so they can't take their garage or their driveway and convert that into their home business. There can be no hazardous materials involved and no significant increase in utilities. And these are the same conditions that we've had for a long time in the city of Monterey and have seemed to adequately address the issue of home occupations in our city. So in summary, we're recommending a fairly small amendment to our municipal code to allow home occupations subject to the existing restrictions without a separate permit process. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
I have a question. What is significant? Significant extra traffic, significant extra pedestrians? What's significant? Do we have any kind of a feel for what that might be?
Well, I think we do through compliance cases. You know, if people are showing up to work, you know, they bring their car, and that's how we usually find out if there's a business, you know, occurring. If somebody's stopping by the house once a week or once every couple of weeks, that's not really problematic, but it's when either customers or employees start showing up regularly at the site that becomes problematic.
Second question, will the neighborhoods be informed that that a business is starting up in their in their neighborhood?
No, we would be issuing business licenses and then giving them the conditions of approval. If we get a complaint that a site appears to be occupa, you know, operating as a home occupation, we can let them know if it is or isn't, and then we can go out and do some outreach to the property owner to resolve any issue. By the way, in my experience here, over the last quite a long time, I think we've had three or four violations of home occupation permits. So it's not a consistent code compliance issue.
Is it, Kim, Stephen here, is it a revenue-raising problem? Is that what, it's costing us more to do the permit process and enforce it than the money we're bringing in? Is that what's sponsored, or is that what's behind this?
I think our challenge has been that we have been reduced in clerical staff in our department. I think our challenge has been that we have been reduced in clerical staff in our department for about a year now. And we get about 40 to 50 of these applications a year, and we have to send notices out to the surrounding business or the surrounding tenants. We have to wait 10 days. So there's a whole administrative process that we don't think is really valuable anymore. Like I said, we have one or two, maybe every couple of years that are problematic. And we have a lot of people that are working from their home. You know, when this regulation was created back in the 80s, I think there was just a very different environment than there is today.
And of course, if you get rid of the permitting process, then you can't threaten a revocation of a permit over somebody who maybe isn't complying.
So we, we won't be able to revoke the permit, that's correct. But we'll still be able to find the same amount that we can today. So it's so much for a first violation, second, and third violation. And so we have the same remedy we have today.
Okay. And that process then becomes a civil fine?
Yes, it becomes correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for the clarification, Steve.
I have a quick question. So all, as somebody who has done one of these applications and received a permit and applied for a business license, yes, yes. Is this process and notification of all the rules that you have to follow in order to get a business license, is this going to be incorporated into the application for the business license?
So my goal is, is to work with our finance department, who administers the business license procedure, and so that that, those ten conditions can give, be given to people that are at sites that are in a residence. So it's to incorporate it into our finance, financial proceedings.
Okay. Otherwise, they know what the rules are.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions? I have one cup, a couple of questions. First of all, is the business card an advertisement? Kim?
I think the way the code reads is like advertisement in a publication of some sort. So on a website or on, yeah, I don't think if people hand out a business card, that that would necessarily be a violation.
I remember business class, that was the first type of advertisement they, they told you to do. So, okay. Second one, if someone runs a business and applies for an A D U, is there an issue there?
No, people can, because an A D U can be rented, and as somebody's residence, they can also have a home occupation from their A D U.
That's an accessory dwelling unit.
Yes, correct.
Thank you. That answered my question. Any public comment?
I don't see any public comment, but for the record, let me go ahead and repeat the phone number. It's 1-831-225-0330.
Thank you. Any comments?
This is Hudson, since I started all the other ones, so I'll start my comment first on this one. You know, I was a little, when I first started reading through this, I was a little bit nervous about it. Thinking, wow, we're gonna, you know, do something different. And everybody's going to be working in their homes, and we're going to have people, you know, driving up and, you know, and, you know, for example, lawyers, right? Lawyers meeting clients in their houses all day long. I know, nobody wants to meet with a lawyer. Nor should anybody. But, you know, but I'm, I'm comfortable with it now. Again, I was a little bit, I was, I was, I was concerned at the beginning, but I'm not concerned anymore now. I, you know, I think it's, it's, in this day and age, you know, you have to adapt, and this is part of adapting. You know, the one thing that I would, my only comment is, is that, you know, for example, people who have office buildings that are needing tenants to, to conduct businesses, this is, to a certain degree, going to be a detriment to them. But they already had, you know, there's always, they already had this right to do it. You just had to go through a different process. And, and so I think, I don't imagine that you'll get a flood of people wanting to start businesses and moving out of offices and off seeing from their home. But I, I support it.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Oh, this is Terry Latassa. Yes, I also have one of those home occupation permits. And I think staff has made a good, a good argument for, for this change, and I support the motion. Or I support the, the change.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Mike Dawson here. My wife, my wife has done this before, and it worked out very well. She, of course, she never had any visitors and nobody driving up in cars, which is useful. We have had some, how shall I say, abuses in the neighborhood, where there was a sign on the door, and there was advertisements in the newspaper, la, 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 for, for a, for a spa across the street. That took a while to get rid of, and I guess, I guess we'll, we'll have to be vigilant in, in to prevent that stuff from happening in the future. Looks like Brassfield fell off the, fell off the edge of the painting there.
Kim, clear your screen.
We can hear you. We can see, Kim, we can see what you're showing.
There you go.
Thank you. Mike just called in, and I'm sorry I was double tasking. Mike's computer just died. So with that, I need Vice Chair Freeman to take it over. Thank you.
So we've heard a number of comments. If there are no more comments, is there a motion?
Yeah, this is Hudson. I move to consider, I've moved to recommend to the city council to repeal and replace Monterey City Code Section 38-26 subsection G to allow home occupations without a separate permit process, subject to restrictions.
It's not true. Is there, do you hear a second?
I'll second that. This is Dan Fletcher.
There's been a motion and a second to repeal and replace Monterey City Code 38-26, parenthesis, G. Is there any comment on the motion? Hearing that, all those in favor, if Kim will read the roll call.
So Chair Brassfield's not available. Vice Chair Freeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa?
Aye.
Commissioner Milich?
Yes, well, I advise that we recommend to the city council that they repeal.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
All right, by unanimous vote, we approve the recommendation to city council. Is there any other further business that we need?
One abstention, that would be Brassfield.
Right, one abstention. Mike Brassfield. So if, if there, if, if that is the end of our regular business, do we have a planning commission, Planning Office update? Because I have one question about something you brought up before.
I was planning to update you on our staffing issue, but I got, I received a call during this meeting, and it looks like there's going to be additional changes. So I'm going to reserve any comments to a future time. And I have no further update for the planning commission, so any commissioner's comments are welcome.
Okay. I have one question. I just printed while we were listening the report for the city council meeting tomorrow, so I haven't read it. I just printed it out. Couple of weeks ago, you suggested that the city would consider closing Alvarado Street and opening up the street to outdoor seating as a way of bringing business back. Is that still on or off the table?
It's definitely an option, and we're really excited to report a couple of things to you. The first, you've probably noticed that our Public Works Division just finished repaving Alvarado Street. If you haven't, you should drive down there. It looks new and refreshed and really exciting. The second part is, there had already been an N C I P project to install bollards at the end of the street for safety during farmers' market events. And those bollards will be ready for installation on May 31st. They're actually easily removed and stored off to the side and then installed for special events. So from a city perspective, there's going to be a real option for that to occur as of May 31st. Our city manager has requested that Rick Johnson with the old Monterey Business Association really work with the business owners on Alvarado about whether or not they want to close. And we're getting mixed reviews right now. But, you know, and all, a lot of different opinions out there. So I think we're hopeful that in the next week, week and a half, we can get direction from the businesses and the business community if this is something that's advantageous.
You know, it's funny, I sure, I'm sure there'll be some resistance, because it's a major one-way street. But on the weekend, the man who owns Brittany Crepes on the mall opened his tables up throughout the mall, including the pizza section of the hotel. The tables were spread all over, and I want to say there was 100% occupancy when I went down there. So he told me that his business had been cut in half, well, first had been cut to zero, and then it went back up 50%. So he was a living example that this really could work quite well.
And there are also discussions about how we're going to reopen Cannery Row. What will be the appropriate social distancing to enter into the aquarium? They're looking at those reopening plans with potential partial closures of Cannery Row Street as well. So I think we, there are opportunities for both Cannery Row and Alvarado Street.
Kim, what, what's the status of the Tuesday afternoon farmers' market on Alvarado? Is that still going on?
No, it's not. The, the one that I'm aware of right now is the farmers' market has been moved to Del Monte Center
That's the Friday.
Friday afternoons, and I think both the one from downtown, as well as M P C, has sort of, I guess, relocated, if you will, for a while till Del, to Del Monte Center.
Thank you.
They also have a minor, a minor farmers' market on Sunday morning at, at, at Del Monte Center near 60K.
Great, thank you.
So Kim, I, this is Terry. If, if there were to be a temporary pedestrian mall, let's say, at Alvarado Street, would that be something that we would need to agendize and go through the whole sort of ordinance-type thing? Or how does that work?
Well, so first of all, are the downtown-specific plan already allows outdoor seating? That typically covers our sidewalk areas. To allow it in the street, typically, you know, I'm not, well, the planning, you know, usually, planning commission decisions don't govern the street right away as much. So whether or not that would just go directly to city council, I think that's probably where it would go, unless they wanted you to think about it or about any issues with that.
I would think it would go to the police department, and then the police department would go to the city manager who would take it to the city council.
Yeah. So our city traffic engineer has sort of been the lead on facilitating discussions, because there's obviously a lot of safety issues about tables and streets.
And there's also the vehicle code, which doesn't allow closing of streets unless you jump through the hoops.
Yeah, I know that one of the big issues, believe it or not, will be how bathrooms are dealt with. That's something somebody has to consider.
Why? Are we having a miniature golf operation there? Do you remember that a couple of years ago?
I remember.
It's good.
We went six to nothing in favor of the miniature golf. And I think the council overruled that by nothing.
I have one more comment. I'd like to thank you, Kim. I know how hard this must be, laying people off and dealing with all that stuff. So I really appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you very much. We've got an incredible team here at the city, and we are continued and with a lot of different innovation and problem solving at all levels. So thank you.
And also, the door isn't totally closed if we are able to recover. And that's the main thing. And personally, I want to thank Jennifer for bringing me on board to Google Hangout Meet and learning how to participate in a meeting like this. I think you've done a wonderful job.
Yeah, thanks to Jennifer.
Thank you guys so much. So sweet. I've really enjoyed working with you.
Yeah.
And C P K.
There will be another tomorrow, obviously. But if there are no other comments, I think we can declare the vote.
C P K California Pizza Kitchen, right, Mike?
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Etch it.
All right, the meeting is officially closed. Thank you very much.